Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. Council will come to order. Members will take their seats. Visitors will retire to their seats outside the rails. All conversations must cease at this moment. If you feel the need to have a sidebar conversation, please step outside the chamber. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Nathaniel J. Holmes of Community Baptist Church of West Philadelphia. He is here today as the guest of Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
O down his presence, my soul takes a light. And who in inflection I can call, my comfort by day, my song in the night, my hope, my salvation, my all. Lord, before we ask you for anything, we thank you for everything. For I lay down last night, and early rising this morning. The Book of Lamentations tells us that morning by morning, new mercies we see, great is thy faithfulness. We thank you for these men and women that gathered this morning to discuss the business of this great city we call Philadelphia. We pray that you crown them with wisdom and understanding and knowledge, as they take their training, their education, and their wisdom to take care of the business of this great city. You asked us in the Bible, you said, "Trust the Lord with all your heart, and lean not to your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path." We thank you for covering each and every one that's here today. We gave glory and praise to your mouth's name. For this day, we thank you for these people that go on together with knowledge and wisdom. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
The Chair thanks the pastor for his invocation. Council will now be at ease. April 18th, 2024. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 18th, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 18th, 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is the request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you. The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today's show of those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, we welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to join us as we attend the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. Special guests in our chambers today, we have Philly Bult, who is here with the students from the Academy of Palumbo, who have been learning about City Council for the past few months. In our gallery chambers, let's give them a round of applause. We also want to welcome the participants from Community College of Philadelphia, who are legislators for today. Let's give them a round of applause as well. I also have president for today from Community College, Ms. Hella Kader. Give her a round of applause as well. We also have a couple of members who have special guests who want to take a moment to acknowledge Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor of a guest today, Paul Maskey from West Belfast. He flew in last night. Tonight, he is the guest speaker at the Irish Society banquet, and he's a sitting member of parliament, or not a sitting member, he's a member of parliament. He's chose not to sit. He's renowned for his constituent service and his activities on behalf of United Ireland. So a warm welcome to our friend, Paul Maskey.
We welcome you to our chambers today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Today, I'm going to introduce a resolution for our champion of the week. Our champion of the week is here. I just wanted us to take a moment to acknowledge someone who does a lot of mentoring work through his nonprofit organization in the city of Philadelphia, helping young people as it relates to socializing and engaging them through athletics. Can we take a moment to give Mr. Buddy Martinez a round of applause? Buddy, can you stand up for us? Thank you, Buddy, for being here, and thank you for all the work that you do with our young people. Buddy is our champion of the week this week. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The Chair recognizes that the sergeant-at-arms delivered the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk.
The Councilmember Goffey raised her hand.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardier. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. In honor of International Jazz Day, we are honoring Lee Morgan, who was a phenomenal and historic jazz legend, who's from the city of Philadelphia, and his family is joining us in chambers today. So can we recognize them?
Absolutely. Can you stand? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Katzie Lizada.
Council President, today I'm going to introduce a privileged resolution recognizing the difficult work, but necessary work, of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance of Philadelphia Department of Human Services for their collaborative work and their commitment to healing and justice to victims, to child abuse victims. So please help me welcome them into the chamber and congratulating them as well for their performance.
Congratulations. Can you please stand? The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the sergeant-at-arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Excuse me? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandow.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just want to take one second to also say that I will be introducing a resolution today honoring Stephanie Haynes, who is retiring as the executive director of Philly Family Pride, and we'll be talking more about her. Thank you.
Will the chief clerk read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the president and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body the following proposed ordinance. An ordinance authorizing an increase in nonelectoral indebtedness of the city within the Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds towards various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds and connections with the issuance of the bonds and certain other actions, and rescinding the authorization set forth in Bill Number 230186-A approved September 15, 2023. An ordinance authorizing the vacating of Beaumont Street from 51st Street to its terminus southwesterly therefrom. A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 6657 and 59 Blakemore Street, including the former 530-34 Vernon Road, 50 Column Street, 56 Column Street, 60 through 74 Column Street, 101 Column Street, 67 Church Lane, 838587 Church Lane, 45 East Garfield Street, 4751 East Garfield Street, 5417, 5423 through 27, 5429 through 43, 5513, 5515 Lena Street, 4949, 4951, 6526 through 34 Germantown Avenue, 117 Mannheim Street, 36, 38, 40, 42, 44, 46, and 63 East Worcester Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4419R Market Street and 4310R Haverford Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia. And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4419R Market Street, 4310R Haverford Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 928 French Street in the 5th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 49 East Earlham Street, 207 East Penn Street, 313 East Brinhurst Street, 292, 278, 260, 226 East Brinhurst Street, 522 Wakefield Street, 429 East Ashmead Street, 5414, 5415 Morton Street, 5608 High School Street, 5642 Morton Street, 53 East Pasture Street, 261 East Sharpneck Street, 263 East Sharpneck Street, 112, 111 East Springer Street, 4925 Wakefield Street, 326 Shidaker Street, 342 Shidaker Street, 4951, 4957, 4961, 4975 Sheldon Street, 4635 Germantown Avenue, 44 Rieger Street, 42 Rieger Street, 4946 Kaiser Street, 1542 West Loudoun Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 8th Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: Mechanic Street, Musgrave Street, East Phil- Elena Street, East Sharpneck Street, East Ashmead Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank. And to the members and to the president and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to Section 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill Number 240215, 216, 220, 239, 241, 243, 244, 247, 248, 249, 250, and 281 for approval, and Bill Number 240242 not for approval. I am pleased to advise you that on April 19th, 2024, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on April 18th, 2024, Bill Number 240176. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 23rd, 2024, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on April 11th, 2024, Bill Number 240015, Bill Number 240017, and Bill Number 240020-A. Council President, there are no other communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and colleagues, as well as the viewing public. I have no bills or resolutions for introduction today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Nothing today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardier.
Good morning, Council President. I have one bill and four resolutions, one privileged, three nonprivileged.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location on Baltimore Avenue between 58th Street and 59th Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution also naming the 1100 block of South 53rd Street as Mama Niabey Al-Rousal Way to honor the life and cultural contributions of Mama Niabey Al-Rousal to the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a resolution, a nonprivileged resolution, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4419R Market Street and 4310R Haverford Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4419R Market Street and 4310R Haverford Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Edward Lee Morgan, whose soulful melodies and blazing improvisations continue to inspire musicians and bring joy to his legions of fans worldwide.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning again, Council President. I have one resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and congratulating the champion of the week, Buddy Martinez of Timoteo Sports, which utilizes athletics to engage with and mentor young people in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I offer two bills and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the two bills and two privileged resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 21-1200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Citizens Police Oversight Commission to modify the procedure by which members of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission may be removed, providing a procedure to suspend members and clarifying the terms in that chapter, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no parking regulation on the west side of North 34th Street between Indiana Avenue and Clearfield Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Cynthia Kishanend as a champion of urban greening and community empowerment for her leadership of the East Fall Trees Lenders.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the meaningful work conducted by the Friends of Wissahicken, as well as for their 100 years of service to the city of Philadelphia, the Wissahicken Valley Park, and the surrounding areas.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandow.
Good morning. I have one bill co-sponsored by Councilmembers Driscoll and Young, one privileged resolution and one nonprivileged resolution. Thank you.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolutions?
An ordinance amending Section 9-215 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streeteries, modifying requirements related to the city's revised standards and requirements associated with the use of portions of the right-of-way for outdoor dining.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution urging the Biden administration to immediately release the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's affirmatively furthering fair housing rule.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Stephanie Haynes for her impact as executive director of Philadelphia Family Pride.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Katzie Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. This morning, I offer two bills, one privileged resolution, co-introduced with Councilmember Thomas.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolutions?
An ordinance amending Section 14-533 of the Philadelphia Code entitled MIN, Mixed-Income Neighborhood Overlay District, to update the illustrative maps to reflect recent redistricting changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance approving the Sixth Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the American Street Industrial Corridor Urban Renewal Area, being the area generally bounded by Lehigh Avenue, Burke Street, and Montgomery Avenue on the north, by Second Street and Phillips Street on the east, by Gerard Avenue, Oxford Street, and Jefferson Street on the south, and by Germantown Avenue, Sixth Street, and Third Street on the west, including the Sixth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, which provides inter-alia for changes that would make it consistent with the North Philadelphia Redevelopment Area Plan and generally consistent with the most recent comprehensive plan approved by the City Planning Commission of the city of Philadelphia.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance, PCA, and the Philadelphia Department of Human Services, DHS, for their collaborative commitment to bring healing and justice to victims of child abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April 2024 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Jeffrey J. Young.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution co-introduced with Councilmember Landow, I'm sorry, and another privileged resolution co-introduced with Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to hold hearings to examine the progress made since introduction of the Philadelphia Urban Agriculture Plan to convene agencies and stakeholders needed to make further progress and to create an implementation strategy to expeditiously meet the goals of the plan.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution honoring and expressing gratitude to Philly Black Pride for its ongoing work to center and support underserved Black and Brown folks in the LGBTQ+ community, and recognizing Thursday, April 25th through Sunday, April 28th, as Philly Black Pride Weekend in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neal. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember O'Neal, I offer one bill.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-2700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by changing certain boundaries and establishing new permit parking districts, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. For the record, Councilman Driscoll has no bills or resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one privileged resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolution?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-2700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by extending the authorized duration of temporary parking permits and setting new part permit application fees, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Settlement Music School on its 116th anniversary, and recognizing and commending its directors, officers, faculty, staff, and students, both past and present, for making Settlement Music School an institution known worldwide for its excellence.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer six nonprivileged resolutions in one bill.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by adding definitions and creating a new Chestnut Hill Lower East NCO in the area generally bounded by the Septa Chestnut Hill East Line, Cressham Valley Drive, Germantown Avenue, Winston Road, Moreland Avenue, Devon Street, Ardley Street, and Springfield Avenue, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
A nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 6657-59 Blakemore Street, including the former 530-34 Vernon Road, 50 Column Street, 56 Column Street, 60 to 74 Column Street, 101 Column Street, 67 Church Lane, 838587 Church Lane, 45 and 47 and 51 East Garfield Street, 5417, 5423 through 27 Lena Street, 5429 through 43 Lena Street, 5513, 5515 Lena Street, 4949, 4951, 6526 through 34 Germantown Avenue, 117 Mannheim Street, 36, 38, 40, 42, 44, and 46 East Worcester Street, and 63 East Worcester Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 8th Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: Mechanic Street, Musgrave Street, East Phil- Elena Street, East Sharpneck Street, East Ashmead Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank. pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 49 East Earlham Street, 207 East Penn Street, 313, 292, 278, 260, 226th East Springer Street, 5222 Wakefield Street, 429 East Ashmead Street, 5514, 5515 Morton Street, 5608 High School Street, 5642 Morton Street, 53 East Pasture Street, 261 East Sharpneck Street, 263 East Sharpneck Street, 112 and 111 East Springer Street, 4925 Wakefield Street, 325 Shadaker Street, 342 Shadaker Street, 4951 Sheldon Street, 4957, 4961, 4975 Sheldon Street, 4635 Germantown Avenue, 44 Rieger Street, 42 Rieger Street, 4946 Kaiser Street, 1532 West Loudon Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 8th Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: Mechanic Street, Musgrave Street, East Phil Elena Street, East Sharpneck Street, East Ashmead Street, pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 1532 West Loudon Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 5803 Knox Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
And a privileged resolution honoring the founding of Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity, Inc. on the occasion of its 120th anniversary.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a report from the Committee of the Hold.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee of the Hold reports out eight resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on the Hold to which was referred Resolution 240254 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Crystal Cabbage to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation. And the Committee on the Hold to which was referred Resolution Number 240255 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Sarah Ashley Andrews to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation. And Resolution 240256 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Joan Stern to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation. And Resolution 240257 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Reginald Streeter to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation. And Resolution 240258 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Wanda Novales to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation. And Resolution 240249 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Whitney Jones to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation. And Resolution 240260 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Chow Wing Lam to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution with a favorable recommendation. And Resolution 240262 entitled Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Cheryl Harper to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the consideration of the resolutions that were just read into the record by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council.
It has been moved in property seconding that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the resolution that is read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Resolutions Number 240254, 240255, 240256, 240257, 240258, 240259, 240260 and 240262 will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a report from the Committee on Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs to which was referred Bill Number 240003 entitled Authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a multi-year agreement with Bennett Compost, Inc. for food scrap collection and management of a compost facility on city property located at 5650 Rising Sun Avenue, under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading this day of Bill Number 240003 that was just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
Can I have a second? It has been moved in property seconding that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 240003. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Bill Number 240003 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the Committee with the suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 240254, 240255, 240256, 240257, 240258, 240259, 240260, 240262, 240306, 240308, 240309, 240318, 240321 and 240322. All other bills are being held.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar for possible action in today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commentators each will have three minutes to speak. However, due to our volume of testifiers today, this time limit may vary from session to session, and today's time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is a reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that time, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I will now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
We have Darrell Raymond Cox. And can Faye Anderson, Cornelius Swinson and Jacqueline Wiggins also make their way to the podium? Darrell Raymond Cox? This way, sir. And Faye Anderson, Cornelius Swinson, Jacqueline Wiggins and Dr. Diane Turner can also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Raymond Darrell Cox. Good morning. And thank you for representing my family today.
One second, sir. Let's do a mic check.
Can you? Hello?
Go ahead, sir. You can begin.
Okay, good morning. And thank you for representing my family today. My name is Raymond Darrell Cox and I'm the firstborn nephew of Lee Morgan. Okay. I would like to state that my family is very proud of what the city is doing for us, showing us the love that they have for our beloved family member. Lee is a homegrown Philadelphia phenom from the Tioga section of North Philadelphia. Lee traveled the world performing with the Jazz Messengers and with his own band. But there is one thing that he really loved more than anything that I saw as a teenager, because Lee was 15 when I was born. He loved coming back home and seeing family and performing at the Aqua Lounge and South Jersey and everywhere else where he had an engagement with. Once again, I'm extremely grateful to the City of Philadelphia and everybody that participated in making this plaque a reality. It's been a long time since he was assassinated, I guess you could say. Like my uncle, I love Philadelphia as well. And I'm a homegrown Philadelphian too. And I will always cherish what you have done for me, my family, as well as the people of Philadelphia that love them as much as we do. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Faye Anderson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to thank Councilmember McGautier for the resolution honoring Edward Lee Morgan. While his life was tragically cut short, Lee Morgan really lived a full life. That's what Lee's beloved sister Ernestine Morgan Cox, Darrell's mother, wrote in an open letter published in the Philadelphia Tribune 50 years ago. Ms. Ernestine wrote, quote, "Though he only lived to be 33, he managed to accomplish more than some of us who have 60 or more years in which to do it." Lee did indeed live and he has left an indelible impression on the lives of many whose path he has crossed. That's the Lee Morgan, that's the Edward Lee Morgan we are celebrating today and on International Jazz Day when his historical marker is unveiled in front of the Aqua Lounge, which was located at 52nd and Chancellor. The Aqua Lounge, a place that Lee loved and the only jazz club listed in his address book. Thank you. And I just want to make notes. This is Lee's signature. This is from his address book, if you can see it. That's his... Oh, this is Lee's signature. Thank you. He learned his pimpership in the Philadelphia public schools. Thank you.
Cornelius Swinson?
Good morning, Council President, Council members, family and friends. I'm Cornelius Swinson, Executive Director of Johnson House Historic Site, an underground railroad station located in the heart of Germantown. I'm thrilled to be here today. During Black History Month, Johnson House hosted an event to recognize the contributions of Philadelphia Black musicians, including jazz trumpeter Edward Lee Morgan. Today's resolution that honors the legacy of Lee Morgan is especially meaningful for Lee's family and for Faye Anderson, the leader who led the nomination's journey. I'm truly blessed to witness their personal joy. As a national historic landmark, the dedication of a historic marker is especially meaningful and highly significant. Each time a marker is proposed and reaches the point of its unveiling, those whose work in the realm of the historic community are affirmed by its erection. Lee Morgan deserves this distinction. My personal connection to Lee Morgan and his artistry began with my late father. I grew up listening to Sid Winder on The Mark of Jazz, narrated by Sid Mark, a radio program. My dad insisted we listen as children. I grew up on Chestnut Street and 52nd Street was our local business corridor where we shopped to buy the latest trends in clothing and shoes. I walked by the Aqua Lounge on 52nd Street and wondered who got in its iconic doors to enjoy an evening of cultural music expression and enrichment. I moved to Germantown and met Lee's sister Ernestine, Darrell's mother. Ernestine was a 59th Ward Committee person and I was a 12th Ward Committee person. We enjoyed each other's company. I listened to Ernestine talk about how proud she was of her brother. And Ernestine lived on Washington Lane and years later, I started work at Johnson House, located at Germantown on Washington Lane. Talk about full circle. No matter Lee's zip code or income, it's clear to me that family love and nurturing gave life to his story. Today, it will be forever publicly preserved. Unveiling this historic marker couldn't have come at a better time. Raising public awareness of the significance of historic markers, especially those acknowledging the contributions of African-American and their accomplishment, lifts up and elevates a new opportunity to educate us all on behalf of families, neighborhood business corridors, schools and longstanding private public institutions in Philadelphia and especially in West Philadelphia. I want to express my deep appreciation to Councilwoman McGautier for your support.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Wiggins and then Dr. Diane Turner, Elizabeth Waring and Amelia Schmerz can make their way to the podium as well.
Good morning, members of the City Council, Lee Morgan family members, friends and jazz musicians and jazz lovers in our city and everywhere. My name is Jacqueline Wiggins. When Faye Anderson asked me to give a few remarks about Lee Morgan, I had to smile. You see, I served on the PHMC, Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission Historic Marker Panel when the nomination application was reviewed. And what an application it was. As a retired teacher educator myself, it delights when family serves as a source of introduction to the world of word through reading, but it becomes very special when it comes to also an introduction to the arts. And in the case of Mr. Morgan, when his sister Ernestine gave him his first trumpet. And hosting those jam sessions at their home, going to the Earl Theater to see some of the greats like Cab Calloway, Louis Armstrong and Duke Ellington, all nurtured him in his early musical development. And when I saw in the application Philadelphia school names, Gillespie Junior High, now closed... closed, but where Lee Morgan decided to make music his career choice, and Mass Bond Vocational Technical High School, known for its respected music program and had earned a reputation for training great jazz players, I felt proud, especially as an educator and having taught at Mass Bond myself. Thank you to the family for their early fostering of Mr. Morgan's interest in jazz, giving his creativity a chance to blossom. Much appreciation to all of the talented teachers and musician professionals who saw his genius and paved the way for him to grow. And thanks also to Councilwoman McGodier for your support. But there is someone else to thank, and that's Fay Anderson. Thank you for your thoroughly excellent application in lifting Mr. Morgan's work, not only for the state historic marker, but also for nominating Morgan's 1963 album, The Sid Winder, to the Library of Congress, where Lee Morgan's name will be preserved in the Library of Congress's National Recording Registry. Thank you Fay and all that Philly jazz for your tenacity and perseverance, and to the family. Thank you.
Dr. Diane Turner?
Good morning. I bring you greetings from the Charles L. Bloxen Afro-American Collection at Temple University. And I know Mr. Bloxen is smiling down right now because he was instrumental in having more than sixty-three African-American historical markers placed around the city of Philadelphia through a grant that Dr. Bernard C. Watson gave him when he was at William Penn Foundation. When Fay asked me to talk about Lee Morgan, I was overjoyed. One of my areas of research is jazz in Philadelphia. Philadelphia is a cradle of jazz. And I thank Fay and the Lee Morgan family for being dedicated and relentless in making sure that this happens, because oftentimes, we look and we celebrate, but people don't know what you have to go through to get this. So Lee Morgan is well-deserving, and I was privileged enough to interview his uncle, who Darrell looks like. When I came in today, I said, hey, you look just like your uncle, Jimmy Morgan. And we sat down. One of the things I do is conduct oral history interviews. And when I worked at the African-American Museum, we actually had Lee's trumpet on display there. But I learned a lot from Jimmy Morgan. They loved Lee. And there's just a couple of things I'd like to say about him. First of all, Lee practiced all the time. He was very disciplined. And he was very competitive, because during that era, their music was in all the public schools. So a lot of the jazz musicians would compete in the high school bands. And so I would say that the arts are very important, and to the city of Philadelphia, make sure there is music in all the public schools. Because through the arts, you learn discipline. You can't fake it and talk about it. You have to have a product, right? So once again, I'd like to thank everyone, and I extend an open invitation for you to come to the Charles L. Bloxen Afro-American Collection. We have materials that relate to Lee Morgan and other jazz musicians, a very extensive collection. So once again, thank you. And once again, thank you Fay and the Lee Morgan family.
Fay Anderson, could you come back to the podium? Ms. Anderson? Fay Anderson? Can you come back to the podium real quick? We just want to say thank you for your advocacy when it comes to the preservation of black history here in the city of Philadelphia, but also your advocacy around making sure as we address the issue of gentrification, we're keeping up our best morals across this city. And so we just want to thank you, continue your advocacy in making sure that we keep what's best that represents the city of Philadelphia. So thank you very much for your good work.
Thank you. Elizabeth Waring, Amelia Schmerz, can also Evan Cannon, Byron Golson, and Jolie Cantaze make their way to the podium?
Good morning, and happy Thursday. My name is Elizabeth Waring, and I manage the Holly Street Neighbors Community Garden, which is a living memorial for Winnie Harris. Winnie Harris, with neighbors, friends, many city organizations, volunteers, established the garden in 2005. Upon her demise from gun violence in 2005, Council-
[inaudible]
Councilwoman Blackwell, at her homegoing service, said that the garden would be preserved. And we are working to get it into the Neighborhood Gardens Trust. And that had been going on even before her demise with Councilwoman Blackwell. So far, that has not happened. The garden has been operating with volunteers, friends, various organizations. High schools have volunteered, just many people. We are keeping it going. But we would like to know that the garden will be preserved. And thanks to Councilwoman Brooks and Councilwoman McGodier. I've been in contact with them, but we have not heard anything from the land bank. And it is a complicated situation with four different parcels involved, and I'm looking forward to the whole problem being resolved. So at this time, we do serve the neighborhood very well, seniors. We contribute to the street fridges, just donate. But our main issue is water. We do not have a water source. So a neighbor has been very kind in helping us. He has moved and relocated, so we are still in limbo. And I was out watering the garden before coming here this morning, because it's just something that has to be done with the help of another neighbor supplying water. So we hope that this is resolved real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Does she recognize the Councilwoman Jamie McGodier?
Oh, it's working now. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Waring and say that this has been a longstanding issue. Sometimes, it can take quite a lot to untangle some of these land issues and sort of push that through the land bank. But my office is committed to that. We're going to keep working and fighting, because I understand how important the garden is to the community and to the people who have been stewarding it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McGodier, and we would like to join in those efforts. So we'll have Nick Deema reach out to you and see how we can strategize and get the land bank moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Amelia Schmerz, can Evan Cannon, Byron Golson, and Jolie Cantaze also make their way to the podium?
Good morning, Council President Johnson, members of City Council. My name is Amelia Schmerz, and I am the Chief Advancement Officer at Settlement Music School. I am here this morning to support the resolution recognizing the 116th anniversary of Settlement Music School. Thank you to Councilwoman Squilla for sponsoring this legislation. We celebrate the anniversary every year with a gala that raises an enormous amount to support the financial aid that we provide for all who need it. It will be Saturday, May 4th. And Stephanie Grant, who is in the Office of Legislative Affairs, is co-chairing along with her husband Byron Golson. At Settlement Music School, we have heart. We were founded in 1908 by two young women who wanted to welcome new Americans and started giving piano lessons for a nickel. Where we are today, we have five community branches, four in Philadelphia, one in Willow Grove, serving people of all ages and all backgrounds. We believe that everybody deserves access to a creative arts education. We teach people six months to ninety-six years from all zip codes in Philadelphia, with twelve thousand services every single week, and we make more than $2.8 million available in financial aid to more than sixty percent of our students. I know there are many people in this room who have gone to Settlement, who have families who have gone to Settlement. I see you. And I have a feeling potentially that the wonderful jazz musician we heard about earlier today has some sort of connection with Settlement. One of our board members likes to say that Settlement Music School is an antidote to poverty. We believe it. We believe that arts education can solve many problems, and we have outcomes to prove it. If I had more time, I could tell you about those outcomes, but we have outcomes for pre-K, for our programs in schools, for how we diversify the field of classical music. These are proven numerical outcomes. There's so much to say about what we do. We offer all instruments, dance, choir. We're online. We have creative arts therapy for people with disabilities and for people who just need that extra help getting through their day or their week. We have more than seventy active community partnerships. We are in all your neighborhoods, creating joy. City Council should know that Settlement is here and ready to partner in any way to make this city even better. Thank you for all that you do to make this wonderful city the beautiful, historic, musical, and joyous place that it is.
Thank you.
Evan Cannon?
Hello and good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, for inviting me here today. My name is Jolie Kantav, and I am the Health and Wellness Coordinator of the Colors Organization. Excuse me, allergies. The Colors Organization was founded in 1991 as an advocacy for Black gay issues. And today, it serves as a safe space for people often tossed to the wayside. Being a part of this recognition, of this resolution, is the culmination of decades to service and commitment of underserved- to underserved communities. For our founders, Philly Black Pride represents a community that stretches across generations. Additionally, all the community organizations who have been dedicated to sexual wellness, queer existence, and liberation, it's amazing to see how far we've come. Philly Black Pride is so special. Its representation of intersected personalities, and how those personalities deserve the same exaltation as their counterparts, is also at the crux of the Colors' mission. So to say we are grateful, thankful, speechless, is not enough. It is an honor, truly. Happy twenty-five years to those who beat their drums loud enough so that we could have a seat at the table. Happy Philly Black Pride to the activists, scholars, performers, who made this organization what it is today. We could not have made it without you, and we are thrilled to serve you. Thank you so much.
Evan Cannon and Byron Golson?
Good morning, Council President Johnson and members of the Philadelphia City Council. I am here this morning to support the resolution recognizing the 116th anniversary of Settlement Music School. My name is Evan Cannon, and for the last three years, I have been director of one of Settlement's signature programs, Music Education Pathways. Pathways is one of the ways Settlement moves outside of its doors to be part of the community by partnering with public schools and after-school bands, orchestras, choirs, and drum lines. We serve two hundred and fifty children after school in eight public schools in five councilmanic districts. In our eleven years, we have been in thirteen different schools and have served over fourteen hundred students. This program is geared to building solid music foundations as well as great citizens of our city. To that end, we provide high-level music education sequentially twice a week for a full school year, taught by experienced music educators who provide large and small group instruction. We focus on strong core values of creativity, teamwork, responsibility, persistence, and self-evaluation, all the tools necessary to become an upstanding member of the community. Our after-school programs are an important part of each partner school's culture as well. Every year, the ensembles from all eight schools come together to make music together, developing new relationships across the city as a whole. There are so many special moments with the kids, musicians, and our partner schools, one of which, I was very proud recently to speak with a young violinist at the Thomas Home Elementary School named Precious, who was on the verge of quitting her instrument. We spent time talking the other week, and she came to me in tears, saying that it was so difficult, and she didn't think that she could continue. And through conversation, I reminded her that she started knowing nothing about an instrument just a few months ago, and now was learning many pieces for our concert. And through that, she was reminded that through persistence and through self-evaluation, what she can accomplish, something that I hope will stay with her for the rest of her life. We are grateful to have such eager partners in the School District of Philadelphia and Mastery Charter schools. If you were to ask me my greatest dream, I would say, I would love for our program to be in all schools, to provide free after-school education for all students. Thank you for your time.
Byron Golson? I'm sorry. Can Michael Galvin, Sheila Emerson, and Gina Rose also make their way to the podium?
You can begin.
Good morning, President Johnson and members of council. I am Byron Golson, and I am here to support the resolution honoring Settlement Music School, introduced by Councilmember Squilla. I was a Settlement Music School student, and now I'm a board member and co-chair of our upcoming 116th anniversary. I grew up in North Philadelphia and was the youngest of five children. My parents decided to put me and my twin brother, at age nine, in music at Settlement Music School. After all, our cousin is the famous composer and saxophonist Benny Golson, who was honored in these chambers ten years ago by Councilmember Young. I'm sure he remembers that. We would like- we would take the bus to the Mary Louise Curtis Branch at Fourth and Queen, and began with piano lessons and music theory. Settlement, along with sports, kept us very busy after school and on weekends. My mom didn't tolerate us being idle. We learned structure, discipline, and teamwork, like I learned playing sports. Fast forward, my twin brother Gene and I were both music majors at West Chester University, and after grad school, we both began working in the Philadelphia Public Schools as music teachers. I retired as an assistant principal at Webster and Kensington after thirty-seven years with the School District of Philadelphia. And yes, more Black men are needed in the public schools, but that's another resolution. I had two professions in music because of Settlement. The other was that I had been a music director at an Episcopal church in West Philadelphia. I met Amelia, from whom you've heard, as her son was my student at Beisham Martin Elementary. It's a great option to keep children occupied and to get exposure to positive role models and other children who are going places. They may end up with college scholarships, like one of the winners of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Talent Hunt last year, who was now at Syracuse on a full scholarship. She was a student at Central High School and Settlement. Settlement, founded in 1908, now has five branches, including ones in South Philadelphia, Winfield, Germantown, and the Northeast. We award scholarships of 2.5 million a year for musicians of all ages. Famous people like Questlove, Christian McBride, Stanley Clarke, and Kevin Bacon got their start at Settlement. I have to give a shout out to a board- former board member Tiffany Thurman, who is Chief of Staff to the Mayor, and our new Arts and Culture Chief Valerie Gay. At our Art Sparks Gala, May 4th, please support Helen Eaton, our highly touted CEO, and students in this resolution. Thank you to Councilmembers Squilla and Sean, and all cosponsors.
Michael Galvin?
Thank you, Council President and members of City Council. My name is Michael Galvin. I am here to say thank you for your support in your resolution honoring Stephanie Haynes, as the Executive Director of Philly Family Pride for the last fifteen years, and special thanks to Councilmember Landau for introducing this resolution to us, for us. So I want to start with a brief story. My husband and I moved to the area about ten years ago from the suburbs of Dallas, Texas. We knew from our first date that we wanted to start a family, raise kids, and be an active member of our community wherever we lived. We moved here in 2015, and Stephanie was one of the first people that connected us to Philly Family Pride and the ability to start a family in the city of Philadelphia. We decided to start our family around the winter of 2019, spring of 2020, probably not the best time, given what was going on at that time. But Stephanie was there from the get-go. She introduced us to PFP's Pathways to Parenthood class. She introduced us to PFP's Pathways to Parenthood class, where we took off and were able to successfully adopt a young man named Jordan, who is a wonderful and incredible part of our lives. I tell this story not because it's unique, but because it's something that Stephanie does for every member of the LGBTQ+ community that's looking to start a family. She builds community, she helps people connect, and you know, I think that there's an aspect of being queer in any community that you get to choose your own family. And Stephanie, through PFP and her work there, has allowed us to build and choose our family here in the city of Philadelphia. And I am so happy to be able to have this resolution to honor and recognize her work. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that our incoming Executive Director Sandra Tellep is here with us today as well for PFP. Hi, Sandra. And I just wanted to say thank you again for all of your time, your dedication, your support for our community here in the city of Philadelphia and making LGBTQ+ Philadelphians feel welcome, supported, and safe. So thank you.
Sheila Emerson, Gina Rose, and then Jenny Greenberg also make their way to the podium?
I'm Gina Rose, we made a little switch. Sheila's a little nervous, so I'm gonna go before her. I'm Gina Rose, I am a former, I was a longtime board member of Philadelphia Family Pride and I'm here to talk a little bit about Stephanie, who is the epitome of a connector and a coalition builder. When I joined the Board at Philly Family Pride, which was only because Stephanie insisted, she told me that her main goal was that both the organization and the Board look more like the LGBTQ+ families in Philadelphia, that we be more multicultural, more diverse in terms of gender and socioeconomic status and part of the Philadelphia area. And she has more than achieved that. Under her leadership, it's, we are an organization that is dedicated to ensuring that LGBTQ families are everywhere in Philadelphia and that we belong everywhere. And I just want to say thank you to Stephanie for her leadership, her friendship, and her determination in building a more diverse LGBTQ+ organization for our community. Thank you.
Sheila Emerson, and then Jenny Greenberg, Queen Judith Robinson, and Stephanie Haynes make their way to the podium.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, all right, I love that, thank you. I am Sheila Lorette Emerson. I am the President of PFLAG Philadelphia. Woo-hoo! Yes! PFLAG is a national organization with international affiliates of LGBTQIA2+ people, parents, families, and allies who work together to create an equitable and inclusive world. We have hundreds of chapters who are leading with love to support families, educate allies, and advocate for just, equitable, and inclusive legislation and policies. A few years ago, before I became involved with PFLAG, I was a volunteer with Philadelphia Family Pride's Planning Committee for their annual conference. These planning sessions were led by Stephanie Haynes. At one planning session, Stephanie shared that PFLAG Philadelphia chapter had been inactive for quite a while and was officially shutting down. Stephanie said it was still a much-needed resource and asked if any of us were interested in reviving the chapter. It is because of Stephanie saying "not on my watch" that PFLAG Philadelphia did not die and is rebuilding and rising from the ashes like a phoenix. Now our chapter is once again a resource in the community. For example, we have free monthly support meetings for families of LGBTQIA2+ loved ones, so they know they're not alone. And on Saturday, May 18th, we'll be co-hosting an event with Galé, where a Hollywood professional makeup artist will provide free, gender-affirming makeovers for teens, young adults, and for the young at heart, so that they can feel their authentic selves. I mention these things because none of the resources my chapter is able to provide today would be available if it weren't for Stephanie being the caliber of person that she is. Was that me? I'm sorry. I think it's my hearing. Stephanie is one of the rare people who says what she's going to do and actually follows through in her actions. Her word is her bond and she is someone you can count on. It was her commitment to ensuring the resurrection of the PFLAG Philadelphia chapter by providing mentorship, valuable connections, and support that makes us once again an impactful asset for our community. Thank you, Stephanie Haynes, Executive Director of Philadelphia Family Pride, and congratulations on being recognized for your superlative and impactful work in our community for over 15 years. Thank you, sweetheart. Bravo!
Jenny Greenberg, Queen Judith Robinson, and Stephanie Haynes.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and City Councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in support of Councilmember Brooks' resolution for a hearing on urban agriculture. My name is Jenny Greenberg. I serve as Executive Director of the Neighborhood Gardens Trust. NGT is Philadelphia's land trust for the protection of community gardens and shared open spaces. For decades, Philadelphia has been a national leader in the community gardening and urban agriculture movement. There are more than 400 growing spaces where residents have transformed abandoned lots into places of nourishment, healing, and community building. These gardens and farms address pressing needs in our city by providing healthy, affordable food, access to peaceful green space, and reducing gun violence. They address historic environmental injustices and support climate resiliency, cooling dangerous summer heat, and reducing flooding. Yet many gardens and farms do not have secure land access and their future is uncertain. Once a garden is lost, it's gone for good, along with all the benefits it provided. NGT provides a solution to this problem by securing ownership for community gardens. I've had the privilege to work with many of you to preserve gardens that were in jeopardy of being lost to real estate development. We've also worked with City Council to tackle systemic threats to gardens like U.S. bank liens and provided recommendations for Philadelphia's first urban agriculture plan. But there's much more work for us to do together. It's critical the city treat gardens as the highest and best use and streamline pathways to preservation. That means the Philadelphia Land Bank must be fully funded for green space acquisition and held accountable. In addition, we need more resources so gardens and farms have the infrastructure they need to grow bumper crops of fruits and vegetables for our neighbors. We also need funding to purchase gardens acquired by real estate speculators so that we don't lose them. In conclusion, thanks for the opportunity to speak and I look forward to participating in the urban agriculture hearing next month.
Queen Judith Robinson, Stephanie Haynes, then Kate Perez.
Hi, thank you so much. I just wanted to quickly say thank you to City Council, thank you to Councilmember Rue Landau, so proud of you sitting there. Also, thanks to the supporters who came to testify today. And Michael shouted out Sandra, but I also just wanted to thank Sandra for taking over the reins of the organization. And then last, just to say hi to my mom who's watching the livestream.
Kate Perez, Benita Williams, and Kay Shipper also make their way to the podium?
I come in support of Resolution 240309. First, I'd like to say happy birthday to Mamia Abu-Jamal, who turned 70 yesterday. A French delegation handed petitions to RDA and Shapiro's office to call for his immediate release. We can't wait to see Mamia free. Now, while we might support the Biden administration's initiative to close this gun show loophole, Biden has permanently lost the support of millions of voters. Just this past Tuesday, Pennsylvania had a historic number of write-in ballots with over 57,951 people statewide voting uncommitted, with more to be counted, thousands of people who are refusing to be complicit in and vote for genocide. This closing of the gun show loophole was issued under a provision of the 2022 Safer Communities Act, a rule that followed the tragic Uvalde shooting, where the Texas Department of Safety responded to the Robb Elementary shooting on May 24th, 2022. 91 DPS personnel were on the school, were at the school where law enforcement waited over an hour before breaching the classroom where the gunman was. 19 children and two teachers were killed. Violence against students is especially horrifying and we should be doing everything we can to prevent it in all its forms. This includes banning guns and stopping the selling of bombs that have already dropped on every university and hundreds of schools and kindergartens in Palestine. We should support the students of Penn University in Swarthmore for their rights to protest, free speech, and refusing to move until we have a complete divestment from all companies that are complicit in the violent colonization of Palestine. In response, our universities are staunchly defending their right to profit from genocide and keep their communities safe by inviting the National Guard to pepper spray and arrest their students. This loophole was created in 2022 but won't be signed until 2024, showing how slowly things move unless it's weapon sales or strangling free speech by banning TikTok. All eyes on Rafa.
Benita Williams, Kay Shipper, and Helen Bradley.
Good morning, Council President Johnson, Councilwoman Lazada, and Councilman Isaiah Thomas, and members of City Council. My name is Benita Williams and I am the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance. Thank you for having my colleagues and myself here today to accept this resolution on behalf of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance. Child sexual abuse is a widespread and underreported problem, the kind of abuse that occurs to all kinds of children in all of our neighborhoods and all socioeconomic levels. Each year, hundreds of thousands of children in our area are sexually abused. Let me give you some alarming statistics. One in four girls and one in 13 boys will experience child sexual abuse. 60% of child sexual abuse victims will never disclose their abuse. 90% of child abuse victims are abused by someone they know, and in half those cases, it's a family member. Although teaching kids about strangers is important, we need to teach our children about the uncle that the entire family knows has issues. We also need to teach them about the neighbor that eagerly wants to watch your children after school. Philadelphia Children's Alliance is a nonprofit organization that has been serving children in the Philadelphia area for over 35 years. We are the only accredited child advocacy center in our city. Our specially-trained staff perform forensic interviews and provide trauma therapy. Our victim advocates provide step-by-step support to the entire family for the duration of each case, which in some cases could include years. We provide support to children that have been commercially sex trafficked and children who have witnessed domestic violence. We offer court support, a caregiver support program, and caregiver support program for non-offending parents at no cost to children and their families. We thank you again for this proclamation for April Child Abuse Prevention Month and special thanks to Councilwoman Lazada and Councilman Isaiah Thomas. Thank you.
Kay Shipper, Helen Bradley, Amy Leach, and Dan Yurivik-Ackberg. Please make your way to the podium. We have Kay Shipper, Helen Bradley, Amy Leach, Dan Yurivik-Ackberg, Jeremy Bladstein, and Lynn Landis.
Good morning. My name is Dan Yurivik-Ackleberg. I am a senior attorney at the Public Interest Law Center. In that capacity, I was part of the legal team that brought in one, the school funding lawsuit that will hopefully benefit all the students of the School District of Philadelphia, district schools, and charter students alike. In that capacity, I am here to urge you to support the mayor's nominees to the school board. That includes Reginald Streeter, who is before you today, and Joyce Wilkerson, who should be. The school district has come a long way in the last 10 years. In part, that is because of this body, right? For those of us who remember where we were in 2013 and 2014, those were dark times in the school district. We have a moment in front of us, it is important that we build on it, that we seize the moment for real progress for the district and protect against anything that will take us backwards. The School District of Philadelphia was long not a good partner in the fight for fair funding, but that has changed in recent years. Dr. Hite and Ori Monson testified at trial, right? They testified because Joyce Wilkerson decided that, sorry, that that was a priority of the district and she made that happen. Reginald Streeter has been leading advocacy efforts to get Philadelphia children, district and charter alike, the resources that they deserve after the decision. I know that there is inevitable push and pull between charter schools and the Board that must authorize that. But to serve charter school students, we must have oversight for charter schools themselves. That's how we protect our kids. I urge you to confirm these nominees and let's build the education that all our children deserve. Thank you.
Jeremy Bladstein, Lynn Landis, then Horace Clowden.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jeremy Bladstein. I'm talking about bill number, wow, what number is it? I lost it. Sorry about that.
240-
An appeal for an ADU over a garage. That is what you are authorizing O'Neill to sue. This is the same thing that we've talked about in the past, about allowing City Council to appeal a ZBA ruling. It doesn't really make sense. It's literally an add-on to a garage outside of a house. So if we're talking about housing and we're talking about green space, we need density. That's the trade-off. And if we're going to allow City Council to use government dollars, taxpayer dollars, to appeal, then you are going against everything you also are saying about affordable housing. So as you move forward, I would challenge each and every one of you to really look at where the density is going to come from if we also are going to be saying that green space is important. Because if you just say, "I want affordable housing," but at the same time, you're saying, "I care about green space," it's not going to lead to more affordable housing because you're not allowing there to be density. So as we move forward, I just would challenge each and every one of you to really look at how you can add density and housing in your districts, along with how do the at-large members contribute to housing in Philadelphia? Because right now, that large people kind of say, "Oh, it's not my thing because of this thing called councilmatic prerogative," you know, my favorite little term. But I just would really like to see housing be a priority along with streamlining the land bank process so that we don't continue to get ourselves in this position to choose between housing and green space. Thank you.
Lynn Landis, Horace Clowden, Lee Clowden, and Gail Clowden. Please make your way to the podium.
Good morning, I'm Lynn Landis, publisher of Protocols for Democracy. Regarding the resolution confirming appointments to the school board, it seems more appropriate and democratic for Philadelphia citizens to be voting for school members to represent them like most other school districts do. That said, today's appointees will face some daunting challenges, to include recent changes in Title IX, which appear to require the admittance into girls' sports and girls' locker rooms biological boys who identify as girls. This defies common sense and logic as it defeats the original purpose of Title IX, which was to give girls an equal but separate opportunity to participate in sports in a safe manner. There is no denying the scientific fact that after a certain- There is no denying the scientific fact that after a certain age, boys have a considerable physical advantage over girls. To pit them against each other in athletic competition puts girls at serious disadvantage as well as risk of serious physical injury. In addition to that controversial issue, the school board should make it clear to parents that in order to attend school, their children are not required by state or city laws to get vaccines, none of which have been tested for their potential to cause cancer, damaged DNA, or impaired fertility, which is printed in Section 13 of every manufacturer's product insert and is also published on the FDA website. In addition, it appears that the school board may face another health crisis as government health agencies, medical institutions, and Big Pharma are issuing warnings about a bird flu or X pandemic. Since those same entities got nearly everything wrong about the COVID pandemic, hopefully the next time, school board members will not blindly follow the Board of Health, who blindly follows federal health agencies. Thank you very much.
Horace Clowden, Lee, Leah Clowden, Gail Clowden, and Obona Haggins.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Horace Clowden. Bill 240254262, I'm opposing because you don't have any true community people on the board. I have applied for the board. I've been a community person who has been involved in school board matters for years. As a member of the parent community advisory council to the board, where fifty percent of the council has fallen to the wayside, I stayed. I was the individual who had the board focused on student achievement and teachers' attendance, whereas you have monthly updates on both at school board meetings. Last Friday, you saw a display of defending a failing school district, along with new members eager to join in with support. Many of the council's concerns were equity in education, driver's ed CTE high school or comprehensive high school facility master plan, pools, thirteen middle-grade sports, six forms of the arts, K-8, a failing model, junior high schools, seventh, eighth, and ninth, overcrowding, and underutilized buildings. I have, again, I have spoken on all of these matters at school board meetings and goals and guardrail meetings, and have given solid solutions. Right now, you have the opportunity to change the direction with whom you put on the board. I'm asking you to put me on the board to make a difference. I am up to date with the issues. Right now, the school board buildings have went from assisting in ten percent of learning to fifty percent of mismanagement. The community voice needs a seat at the table, not just two minutes or written testimony. There were twenty-one high schools out of fifty-two that had zero percent in student achievement slash performance 2021, 2022. With the new Sprey report, the district has hidden that reference. I do challenge the superintendent at school board meetings. I know that you were displeased with Friday's account of what was going on. Don't just pass this through. Stand up, make a difference, oppose this, have the mayor reassess the appointees, and come up with a better nine people. Thank you.
Leah Clowden, Gail Clowden, and Obona Haggins. Simbolai, Lisa Haver, and Victor Young.
My name is Obona Haggins, and I am a fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. April being established as Philadelphia Histories Month is great. Hopefully, you will include in this yearly celebration some recent history as well as history from the distant past. I'm reminded of the history-making event, the first time in recorded history in Philadelphia, an AIDS celebration was shot up. Even in the times of the Prophet Muhammad, nobody shot up an AIDS celebration. Whoever the Muslim community members, council members are, just know that you presided over the first time that an AIDS celebration was shot up. I want you to remember and be reminded and celebrate the fact that I introduced historic legislation to eradicate structural racism. And I want to remind you that the descendants of slavery in this body didn't even stand up for it. But if I was talking about antisemitism, and there were Jewish members in here, you could be rest assured, they would stand up against antisemitism. So what I'm saying is this: Have this April celebration, but remember the tragedies that this council is responsible for. Remember that your study said that the root cause of gun violence is structural racism, and the solution is large-scale investments in the areas that have been decimated by crime, violence, and unemployment. If you refused to address structural racism, again, it's the equivalent of a Holocaust survivor not addressing the Holocaust, not addressing antisemitism. So again, you're on the clock. The structural racism bill is still there. Furthermore, let it be noted in this history-making event that Council President said that he would do me a favor and read my bill, not do his job and represent his constituent. You can't do me a favor when you go and ask for suggestions from the community, and the community gives you suggestions, and you just say, "I'm gonna do you a favor." I'm your constituent in the second district, and I expect you to read it and get back to your constituents because you work for me. I don't work for you. Obona Haggins, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor, over and out.
Simbolai, Lisa Haver, then Victor Young.
Good morning. Hi, good morning, City Council. My name is Simbolai. I'm here for Children First. I'm here to testify in support of Mayor Parker's full slate of school board nominees, and I'm also here to testify in support of Joyce Wilkerson, whose nomination is being held. Ms. Wilkerson provides invaluable institutional knowledge to a new school board comprised of many new faces who have never served the district in this capacity before. She has served in the district in a board capacity since 2015 and has helped steer the district from severe budget cuts, dire fiscal straits, to fiscal stability. So you know that Children First has been here every week since March, asking you to increase local investment in school districts by raising the share of property taxes, going to the school district from fifty-five percent to fifty-eight percent. For those who, just for a point of reference, we expect that to be about a hundred million of local recurring revenue every year. One of the main concerns council members shared is that you wanted to know that the district was a good, would be a good steward of this money. And Council President Johnson, when I testified on March 27th, you said that you wanted to make sure that every dollar given to the school district goes to the benefit of Philly students, and Children First agreed. I agreed with that statement. So one way to ensure that happens is by appointing Joyce Wilkerson. She knows how to weather storms and knows how to turn the district's fiscal situation around. Without Ms. Wilkerson's experience, we'll have a school board where the longest-serving member only has two years of experience, and, you know, ensuring good fiscal stewardship becomes that much harder with a board that's comprised of largely new folks. We want council to invest more in the school district than this year's budget, and we want the district to do what council wants, which is to maximize all its money to the benefit of kids. And that's why I'm urging City Council to support Mayor Parker's full slate of school board nominations, including Joyce Wilkerson. Thank you.
Lisa Haver.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Lisa Haver. I'm a member of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. We're a grassroots organization of volunteers. Members of APS have also attended meetings of the SRC and the Board of Education, but we are actually urging you to confirm all nine of the mayor's nominees. We have criticized the board. We have criticized Joyce Wilkerson. We have sued them in court, but when Mayor Sherrell Parker included Ms. Wilkerson in her nominees for school board, I thought that was a good move. Joyce Wilkerson has kept the best interests of the children, children in all schools, as her guide. When over half of the district's charter schools are under-enrolled, some very significantly, it can only be seen as fiscally irresponsible to start approving more charter schools. In truth, though, this is not about any one board member, because votes on all issues, including charters, renewals, non-renewals, new charter applications, have been unanimous in many cases, and in some, a vote of seven to two. Scapegoating one of the mayor's nominees is really not about the best interests of the children or the city. It's a show of strength by those who want to push for free-market approaches to public education, many of whom are funded by billionaires, including Jeff Yass, who does not live in the city. We are urging the board to approve all of the mayor's nominees. Thank you.
Victor Young.
Good morning. My name is Victor Young, and I... Good morning, Council President and council members. My name is Victor Young, and I'm not here to represent NGT. I started to write some things down, but I said, "You know, my partner will speak better than me putting something on paper." I'm here as a guardian. I'm in support of Councilwoman Brooks' resolution for Urban Act. Now, I heard a lot of good things spoken today. We are stewards of the land, and without the trees, the birds, and all these other things, none of this other stuff exists. None of it exists. As you know, in your district, we have gardens. Well, I have a garden in West Philadelphia, thanks to Councilman Jones and his help. We took a vacant lot full of trash. If you step out there today, you have fruit trees, you have benches, you have people gathering there. We have people in a desert. It's a food desert, because the nearest supermarket is at least a mile away from some of these people, and they don't have food. They can come by our garden and be fed. It's important that we be stewards of the land. So I'm in great support of Councilwoman Brooks' resolution. I'm not just making a resolution, let's go even further, okay? And you know what I'm saying? Don't let it be a resolution, let it be something that's viable. I was here in 2015 with this same problem, and here we are today. Land bank pops in, you can't inhale concrete, you can't eat steel. So that's my words for today. Thank you.
Council President, there are no other names for public comment.
We will now consider the resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240254?
A resolution introduced by Councilmember Thomas for Council President Johnson, resolution confirming the appointment of Crystal Cabbage to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240254.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to take a moment to say thank you to all of the folks as it relates to the level of engagement around this particular process, and also thank my colleagues for being laser-sharp-focused on our children and those who work with our children on a consistent basis. So thank you, everybody. With that being said, Council President, on your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240254 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240255?
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Sarah Ashley Andrews to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240255.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240255 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. The clerk will please read the title of Resolution Number 240256.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Joan Stern to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240256.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240256 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240257?
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Reginald Streeter to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
And that's Resolution Number 240257. It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240257 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240258?
A resolution confirming the appointment of Wanda Novales to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240258.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240258 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240259?
A resolution confirming the appointment of Whitney Jones to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240259.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240259 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240260?
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Chow Wing Lam to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240260.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240260 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240262?
A resolution confirming the appointment of Cheryl Harper to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240262.
Thank you, Council President. Again, on your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240262 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240306?
A resolution establishing the month of April as Philadelphia Histories Month in the City of Philadelphia, commencing in 2025 and continuing annually thereafter.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240306.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240306 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240308? Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240308?
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass House Bill 1130 to create the Safer Communities Grant Program, which will make Philadelphia safer by providing funding for lighting and security cameras around schools, playgrounds, community centers, and other high-crime areas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240308.
Thank you, Mr. President. In support of Representative Ronnie Green, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240308 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the Resolution Number 240309?
A resolution supporting Biden Administration's finalized rule that aims to expand certain background check requirements for firearm purchases and close the gun show loophole.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240309.
Thank you, Mr. President. In memory of our trip up to Oaks, PA with former President Clark, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240309 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240318?
A resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Dual Asian American Pacific Islander and Jewish American Heritage Month in Philadelphia to pay tribute to the rich history and significant contributions made by generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and Jewish Americans to our country, Commonwealth, and city.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240318.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240318 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240321?
A resolution authorizing and ratifying Councilmember O'Neill's appeal on behalf of and as representative of City Council of the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to 4100 Orchard Lane.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240321.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240321 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240322?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the Eighth Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: West Mannheim Street, East Swister Street, East Garfield Street, Column Street, Lake Moore Street, Vernon Road, Lena Street, Germantown Avenue, and Church Lane pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240322.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 240322 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. We will now have the consideration of privileged resolutions. Will the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's final passage calendar?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Gautier honoring and recognizing Edward Lee Morgan, whose soulful melodies and blazing improvisations continue to inspire musicians and bring joy to his legion of fans worldwide.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Garder here for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Thomas, recognizing and congratulating the champion of the week, Buddy Martinez of Timoteo Sports, which utilizes athletics to engage with and mentor young people in the City of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Joan honoring Cynthia Kishanen as champion of urban greening and community empowerment for her leadership of the East Falls Tree Tenders.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the meaningful work conducted by the Friends of Wissahickin, as well as for their 100 years of service to the City of Philadelphia, the Wissahickin Valley Park, and the surrounding areas introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cleaner, greener, safer, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Landau, recognizing and honoring Stephanie Haynes for her impact as Executive Director of Philadelphia Family Pride.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Losada, recognizing and honoring Philadelphia Children's Alliance and the Philadelphia Department of Human Services for their collaborative commitment to bring healing and justice to victims of child abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April 2024 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Losada for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Brooks, authorizing the Committee on the Environment to hold hearings to examine the progress made since introduction of the Philadelphia Urban Agricultural Plan, to convene agencies and stakeholders needed to make further progress and to create an implementation strategy to expeditiously meet the goals of the plan.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Brooks, honoring and expressing the gratitude to Philly Black Pride for its ongoing work to center and support underserved Black and Brown folks in the LGBTQ+ community, and recognizing Thursday, April 25 through Sunday, April 28 as Philly Black Pride Weekend in the City of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Squilla, honoring and congratulating Settlement Music School on its 116th anniversary, and recognizing and commending its directors, officers, faculty, staff, and students, both past and present, for making Settlement Music School an institution known worldwide for its excellence.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Ahmad, honoring the founding of Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity, Inc. on the occasion of its 120th anniversary.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Council President, there are no other resolutions for consideration.
That completes our calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Marked aye on all the resolutions I missed while I was out.
It was duly noted. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to note that after session, Mural Arts, Councilmember O'Rourke and I are hosting a People's Budget Roundtable. This is a culmination of a series of community conversations that Mural Arts has been hosting with residents, business owners, advocates, and city workers around the city. The caucus room will be transformed with artwork to represent the outcomes of the conversation. Lunch will be provided, and it should be fun, and we hope to see council members and their staff there. Now, today, Minority Whip, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, and I are introducing a resolution to call for a hearing on Philadelphia's Urban Agricultural Plan. We are calling for this hearing because we know that Philly's future depends on what we do today to manage one of the most important resources, our land. In the past, our government has helped white families to buy homes, build generational wealth, while pushing Black families to the margin with the racist policies of redlining. To this day, we see the impact of those policies on our neighborhoods. The same neighborhoods that were redlined are the neighborhoods with high rates of instability, poverty, and violence. But in those same neighborhoods, we also have seen the astounding resilience of Black and Brown communities, who cleaned up vacant lots and transformed them into beautiful community gardens that provide food, shade, and safety for the whole neighborhood. Not many people realize this, but the majority of active gardens and farms in our city, about 70%, are in high-poverty neighborhoods, where the majority of the residents are people of color. So when we talk about our urban agriculture plan, we're talking about a lot more than just flowers. We're talking about racial justice. We're talking about stabilizing our neighborhoods and providing free, healthy food in places where people need them the most, and we're talking about planning for a future where our children can truly thrive. Last June, alongside community gardeners, members of the administration, and fellow council members, I introduce that we were able to protect over 90 parcels of land from the threat of saricell. With this hearing on the Arab Agricultural Plan, and with the hearing later this spring on a priority bid for the Land Bank, we are taking the necessary steps to put the land and the resources into the hand who will use it the best, the people who live there. Today, with Councilmember Rue Landau, I am introducing a resolution to recognize this weekend as Philly Black Pride Weekend in Philadelphia. And when I think of Black Pride, I think of Marsha P. Johnson, Bayard Reston, and my good friend, rest in peace, Michael P. Henson, and all the other Black queer ancestors who devoted their lives to their collective liberation. I also think of all the young Black people in my life who deserve to feel honored and valued for who they are, wherever they are, whether it's in their classrooms, at their jobs, in their doctor's office, or even in City Hall. Across the country, with the escalating attacks of queer youth, their teachers, and librarians, Philadelphia must answer that hatred and bigotry with the resounding support of this Black queer Philadelphians. Thank you so much, Council President and colleagues.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Good Council President. It's so, so, so nice to have my minority leader back in town, who has been deep in the fight to maintain urban green space. It's an honor to join her in introducing this resolution to hold a hearing on Philly's Urban Agriculture Plan. It's also great to have the support of the Chair of the Committee on the Environment, Councilmember Gautier, who has also fought for urban agriculture in her district. Some of you may have had the pleasure of reading through Philly's Urban Agriculture Plan, or at least the executive summary and key recommendations. If you haven't taken a look, I do encourage you to find it online or reach out to our office for a link, because you'll be amazed by the hyper-local facts, findings, and suggestions that the plan contains. At the neighborhood, block-to-block level, this plan puts that green in the clean and green that we've been looking for. Amen. You heard our minority leader explain the benefits of urban gardens, but seeing and feeling it for yourself, that's another matter entirely. I just got the chance to do so, joining folks, including the Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmed, at Glenwood Green Acres this past weekend to celebrate Earth Day. At almost four acres, Glenwood Green Acres is one of the largest community gardens in Philadelphia, and sits on a beautiful site in North Philly. I do think that the council member would agree with me on that one. The energy and potential in that space, the community that's been fostered there, it's not something to overlook or even consider trivial. It turned 40 last year, and I think that's worth acknowledging as well. Cities by their nature are ever-changing, so a community hub that has passed hands and stewards over decades is a key point of connection and camaraderie, a site where neighbors can grow more neighborly, learn from each other, and literally share the fruits of their labor. I just want to shout out some of the over 100 gardens, friends groups, and organizations that have been a part of this agricultural work. I'm talking about the Neighborhood Gardens Trust, talking about Black Farmers Collective, the Neighborhood Land Power Project, Caesar Iglesias Garden, the beautiful work done at the San Kofa Farm at Bartram's Gardens. My Southwest folk would know about that, and so, so, so many more. I want to stress it one more time, this is not small ball. Community gardens span our city and touch thousands of lives each and every growing season. To me, it would be beautiful and powerful if everyone in Philly lived close enough to green spaces that build these sorts of connections, and that's the reality that the Urban Ag Plan aims to help facilitate. As we work to implement the agenda, we'll need to ensure that gardeners can establish permanent ownership over the land they steward, and that the officials disposing of public property understand and value these spaces as a form of productive land use. Philadelphians will only stand to benefit, especially as we do more to incorporate green spaces in city-run efforts, from collaborations with our public schools to joint ventures with members of Philly's creative economy, and much, much, much more. This is all feasible, actually within reach, and in some cases, it's actually already happening. So this Earth Week, I hope that we can all take some time to think about the fullness of what we mean when we talk about a green transition. There are so many important changes wrapped up in those two little words, "green transition", which is the work of so many Philadelphians. The Majority Leader has led the charge on granting our city's investments, among other improvement environmental initiatives, and many public officials have toiled to reduce emissions from our built environment, to plant trees citywide, to boost septic ridership, and to develop a green workforce. And there's a ton of important work that I'm actually leaving out there. But I want to make a specific case here. Any just green transition worth its name must show up in our human connections to the land, our material connections to the land where we live, where we work, and where we play. That means providing ample space for people to get their hands in the dirt, to learn to cultivate life and community together. That also means acknowledging this land as Lene Lanape and grasping our history in new ways. It's truly grassroots work. So I'm excited to have this hearing and to see what we can do to implement this truly impressive, exciting, and visionary plan. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Your work, folks. Speech is on behalf of the majority. Majority with Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. A couple things today. First and foremost, I just want to take again a moment to commend the members of City Council as it relates to our school board. As the Chair of the Education Committee, I'm prepared and ready to work with the folks who were confirmed in today, and more than willing to do whatever we need to do to make sure that we're putting our children and their families, who are impacted the most by this issue, in the best position to be successful. I also wanted to take a moment to speak on the Sixers. Clearly, I'm a huge Sixers fan. I think a lot of us were disappointed in the outcome of the game the other day, and I could probably blame the referees or a bunch of other people. But I think what was more disappointing than the Sixers going down '02 is the issues that the workers are facing with Airmark. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to go to the game today, but I do stand in solidarity with those workers. But I do stand in solidarity with those workers because, at the end of the day, I'm gonna be honest, Council President. You know, we are fighting very hard for some of the economic issues that we have in the city. And we do advocate for quality jobs for people, but it's very difficult to make an argument that we need to make some structural change as it relates to what we do to court businesses when businesses don't treat workers the right way. When we look at what's going on with the workers down at the stadiums, the sad part is that we've protested and stood with these workers so many times, from the Black Workers Matter package that we passed with you, Council President, and former Councilmember Gim, to the numerous times that we've stood in support of these workers. At the end of the day, we've been listening to a lot of budget hearings. And one of the things that we're hearing people talk about constantly is the fact that there are too many people in Philadelphia who have a job that doesn't pay them a livable wage. Things have changed post-pandemic. And while we, as government, recognize that things are different, so we are trying to adjust at where we are, we have to also acknowledge that inflation has hit every single household. So when workers are standing up on a consistent basis and asking for support as it relates to healthcare, they're not being greedy. They're trying to take care of their family. When they're telling us on a consistent basis that $15 an hour, which we all fought for at one time, is no longer a livable wage, we have to believe them. If we're going to use studies to determine how we govern and how we make decisions and who we should fight for, then we have to respect those same studies when they tell us that people are not earning a quality living. So as somebody who has always stood with workers in the city of Philadelphia, but at the same time, has tried to do our due diligence to be good stewards, to attract businesses to the city of Philadelphia, I say shame on Airmark. I'm proud to have my Unite Here shirt on in council here today, and I stand with those workers. And I know other councilmembers are just as passionate as I am. So when you go to the Sixers game tonight, we're gonna cheer on our team. We're probably gonna boo the referees. But please, don't buy anything from the concession stands. Stand with the workers. Don't cross the line. Fight for Unite Here. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues.
You're welcome, Member Thomas. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work as well. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. So first, here, here, to the Majority Whip's, or Deputy Whip's comments. I support the Unite Here Airmark workers as well. But I wanted to talk about a couple of other resolutions introduced today. In honor of International Jazz Day, I introduce a resolution honoring Lee Morgan. Lee Morgan grew up in Tioga and began playing the trumpet at 14. After graduating from the Jewels E. Massbaum Area Vocation Technical High School, he joined the Dizzy Gillespie Big Band and signed with Blue Note Records. He began his career as a bandleader with his debut album, Lee Morgan: Indeed, and was a sideman on John Coltrane's Blue Train and Art Blakey and the Jazz Messengers' Moaning. Lee Morgan's The Sidewinder was one of the Blue Note Records' bestselling albums and was inducted into the Grammy Hall of Fame in 2000. And just last week, the Library of Congress announced that it added this seminal album to the National Recording Registry. I want to give a special shout-out here to Fay Anderson from All That Philly Jazz, whose advocacy made this listing possible. We know that people who look like us tend to get overlooked. And I appreciate Fay for ensuring Lee Morgan gets his rightful place in the Library of Congress. Lee Morgan's contributions extend... You didn't clap for that. Lee Morgan's contributions extend beyond his musical talents. He was heavily involved with Jazz and the People's Movement, a cultural group that agitated for greater representation of Black jazz musicians on broadcast television. Unfortunately, Lee Morgan's life was cut short when he died at the age of 33. And while he may no longer be with us, his soulful melodies and blazing improvisations continue to inspire musicians and radiate joy. I want to thank everyone who spoke in honor of Lee Morgan during public comment today, especially Darrell Raymond Cox, Fay Anderson, Cornelia Swinson, Jacqueline Wiggins, and Dr. Diane Turner. And thank you to my colleagues for voting to honor one of our city's great musical minds. I look forward to Lee Morgan being permanently memorialized on 52nd Street next week when he receives a historical marker outside the former Aqua Lounge, where he gave his final hometown performance. Thank you so much. And I also want to take a moment to uplift the resolution authorizing hearings on urban agriculture that was introduced today by Minority Leader Brooks and Minority Whip O'Rourke. Last year, the city released its first-ever Urban Agriculture Plan. This launch represented the first time that the city formally committed to being a partner rather than a barrier to urban farms and gardens. And as the Chair of the Committee on the Environment, I'm proud that the third councilmanic district is home to many grassroots green spaces. Not only do urban farms provide neighbors the chance to build community, gain valuable skills, beautify their blocks, improve air quality, and access fresh produce, but they also help us to reduce violence. Greening vacant lots reduces violent crimes by 29% in the surrounding area. A 2018 study conducted by Penn Medicine's Dr. South found that greening every vacant lot across Philadelphia could prevent up to 350 shootings every year. So yes, urban farms foster food sovereignty, promote sustainability, and build community, but they must also be a part of the conversation when we're talking about gun violence. Historically, the city's policies do not recognize the importance and permanence of urban and community gardens. But I'm proud that this body has already taken steps to reverse this trend. We enacted the Community Land for Community Benefit legislation, which makes it easier for urban farms to acquire city-owned vacant land in certain districts. And thanks to Minority Leader Brooks's leadership, the city is finally buying back many of the lots sold to the U.S. Bank, allowing us to preserve long-established farms and gardens. But we still have a long way to go until urban farmers and gardeners have the support and the resources that they deserve from our city. I look forward to this hearing so we can examine the progress we've made since the introduction of the Philadelphia Urban Agriculture Plan and ensure we are moving quickly and collaboratively to achieve the plan's goals. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jay Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to echo the sentiments of our Majority Whip Councilmember Isaiah Thomas. As we speak right now, the members of Unite Here are on strike. And I want them to know, and everyone else in the city to know, that this body supports your efforts for a livable wage and health benefits. That's all they're asking for. They're asking for the bare minimum to be able to survive out here in this city. And I think a corporation like Airmark should be able to provide those opportunities for workers in this city to be able to live. So thank you, Councilmember Thomas, for your impassioned speech on that. Second, I want to talk about a bill that I introduced last week. I was not here and able to speak about it. But it's Bill Number 240304, which I am calling the Construction Activity Accountability Bill. And what this bill would do, essentially, we've all seen that throughout the 5th District and beyond in our city, there has been property damage done by developers, done by contractors, and their faulty work. So what this bill would do is prevent any permits from being applied for without first presenting a plan to LNI that shows that your neighboring property is now considered an additional insured on your insurance policy. Now, what this does is it allows the neighboring property owner to then reach out to your insurance company directly to file any claims that's necessary for any property damage, rather than trying to find the developer, rather than then gotta go sue them in court. What this does, it allows you to go to the insurance company directly to be made whole again. And we've seen this time and time again throughout our city. Properties are collapsing because of faulty development. We have old structures, old churches with cracks and foundations because of construction. So with this bill, any new construction or any demolition will be required to name the abutting property owners as an additional insured on their insurance policies. We are here to protect the citizens of Philadelphia, and that's what this bill aims to do. Third, and last, Mr. President, tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the John Street Center located at Leffler Poplar, we will be hosting our third iteration of our Neighborhood Budget Town Halls. I'm encouraging everyone, under the sound of my voice, to come out to this Town Hall, to speak to your city council. Let us know how you want your tax dollars spent. Provide us feedback so we can do the people's work. So I look forward to seeing you all tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the John F. Street Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good work. Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. So first, I'm proud to present a proposed amendment to the Philadelphia Code to help our vibrant restaurant scene continue to flourish. Thank you, Councilmembers Driscoll, Young, and Squilla for co-sponsoring. Our streeterys have become an integral part of Philadelphia's dining scene, offering residents and visitors alike the opportunity to enjoy our city's culinary delights in unique and vibrant outdoor settings. And it's crucial that we strike a balance between supporting these establishments and ensuring public safety and the efficient use of our streets. The proposed amendment will open up the possibility for restaurants to enhance the experience of outdoor dining while maintaining the integrity of our public spaces, which is crucial as we head into not only our summer months, but also 2026, when our city will be front and center on the national stage and when Philadelphia will welcome tens of thousands of visitors. Secondly, I'm honored to introduce... I was honored to introduce a resolution recognizing and honoring Stephanie Haynes for her remarkable impact as Executive Director of Philadelphia Family Pride. For over 30 years, Stephanie has dedicated herself to advancing the lives of Philadelphians, particularly within the LGBTQ community. Since joining PFP in 2009, Stephanie has been instrumental in expanding the organization's reach and educational resources. Under her leadership, PFP has organized annual conferences, foster parent information sessions, and social gatherings, providing invaluable support to LGBTQ+ parents and prospective parents. Stephanie's tireless advocacy and commitment to diversity and inclusion has rich the lives of countless families, including mine, in our city. Thank you, Stephanie. And as we recognize Stephanie's outstanding contributions, we also celebrate her upcoming transition as she steps down from her role at PFP. Her legacy of leadership and compassion will continue to inspire us for years to come. Finally, I introduced a resolution that will be on the calendar for adoption next week that calls on the Biden Administration to immediately release the U.S. Department HUD's Affirmative Furthering Fair Housing Rule. This is the rule that directs local governments, state and local governments, to come up with a plan to combat historically discriminatory practices that has left marginalized people, especially Brown and Black people, from purchasing homes and renting and leaves a very unlevel playing field. You know, we've been talking about this since 1968 with the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And as we discussed last week, Philadelphia is way ahead of it. In 1963, we've had rules against discriminatory housing and lending practices. And still today, we see the vestiges of redlining and all of discriminatory practices in the past. And as my colleagues, Brooks, and O'Rourke, and Gaultier, explained today, that we are working hard to try to combat this. But what this rule does is it instructs state and local entities that receive federal HUD funds and says, "You've got to come up with a plan that is going to combat this discrimination." In the Obama Administration, they revised this entire affirmative furthering for housing plan and actually gave it teeth. They rewrote the entire thing and made it fantastic. And Philadelphia jumped in, I was a part of this, to help come up with a plan for Philadelphia that would really, really tackle discrimination and open inclusive housing practices for all. Unfortunately, as soon as Donald Trump was elected president, he immediately turned back that rule, and we weren't... Other entities, like state and local entities, did not have to go forward on this. Philadelphia kept its plan. It kept its promise. We kept moving forward on this. But now, we have a problem that we have the final rule pending, and the Biden Administration has not moved it forward. This rule would make Philadelphia accountable to all of the things we've talked about today, urban agriculture, the land bank, making affordable housing for all. I invite you all to view my hearing tomorrow as we look at the 57-plus blocks with the most gun violence here in Philadelphia, because it's all connected. And we need to make sure that we have the tools in order to eradicate the discrimination and make us all have neighborhoods and homes in which we can thrive and equal access to all of it. So Biden Administration, please do the right thing and move the rule forward. And very, very finally, I just wanted to say, Philly Black Pride this weekend. Super happy about it. I am having an event on Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00 at the University of Pennsylvania LGBT Center. It's Philly Black Queer Magic. And especially colleagues, I hope you all come. Thank you very much.
Good job, Rue. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to follow up on what my colleague, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, spoke about our visit last Saturday to the beautiful Urban Garden. And really, the follow-up is to say, what does the green transition look like, right? We all understand that we are in peril. We have a climate crisis that is endangering so much. And you know, I come from a small country called Bangladesh, where, as we speak, the sea level is rising and land is lost. And those with the least resources are losing their livelihoods. They're losing their homes. And this is all connected. We are in one globe. We are interconnected. And we really have to move towards this green transition. In that light, I actually have a hearing tomorrow. And it's Friday, 3:00. And this is with the Joint Committees of the Environment and Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy. And this is to hear about and understand the issues of reliability and servicing of publicly accessible electric vehicles, charging stations in the city of Philadelphia. And this is an important issue for us. You know, we are an auto-centered country. And we have to move from these gas-guzzling cars to at least those that have no emissions. And if we are to reach our 2050 goals, we have to move very expeditiously to those types of vehicles. And the federal government has been really pushing a lot of resources towards doing that. But what has not happened is the actual piece around the reliability and servicing of these chargers. I look upon this as an opportunity for a job creation as well in terms of creating a workforce that could look to be trained, hopefully by our IBEW, Electrical Workers Union, to understand how to service this and then have a small business that could be spread across the city to make sure these chargers are working in real time. And most importantly, to improve the user experience so we adopt these cars. So I invite everyone, and I in advance apologize So I invite everyone, and I in advance apologize to my councilmen, to my colleagues, that it's at 3:00 on a Friday afternoon, but the issue is critical. And I hope my members will join us on these committees and, as well as the public will view, we have a host of robust number of witnesses lined up. We really need to dig into this, and I appreciate all the support I've received from my colleagues to allow me to hold this hearing at an opportune 3:00 on Friday. But I thank you all, and I thank you, Council President.
Good job, Nina. Go hard and go home. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
First, I wanted to thank our colleague and Majority Whip Councilmember Thomas for his remarks regarding Unite Here. We support the workers at the stadium and appreciate all of their service and work throughout the city of Philadelphia, and so thank you, Councilmember Thomas, for those remarks. I also wanted to take a very brief moment to welcome, officially welcome, the men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated to the great city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness. This weekend, they will celebrate their 92nd anniversary Eastern Regional Conference here in the city of Philadelphia. Their theme for the convention this year is "Everywhere We Go, We Tell Our Story: Advancing Alphas' Footprint." For those of you who are not familiar, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated is the first historically Black fraternity in the country and really around the world. And so we welcome the men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated to Philadelphia this weekend. We thank them for their investment in our city. They will have several service projects in addition to several million-dollar economic impact and also several thousand members. So thank you to their 29th Eastern Regional Vice President, Christopher G. Ellis Jr., and their 63rd Eastern Regional Assistant Vice President, Youssef N. Omar. We welcome you to the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the newest member of Alpha Phi Alpha, Mr. Ernest Owens. Let's give him a round of applause. We appreciate you. Hard work. The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. On Tuesday, we had an election. And I want to congratulate the victors, whatever party, whatever philosophy, congratulations for being a part of the democratic process. I missed my annual pilgrimage to South this year because we were in a aggressive race out West Philly. It went down, it went down to hand-to-hand combat. Like, I actually took a poll, went door-to-door, I got reminiscent, I got, it was nostalgic. I got fired up. But two things I observed. Number one, the folks that were representing the other opponent were there because they believed. You know, I grew up on the corners, so I knew how to shoot the dozens, but he was giving me every bit I could give to him. But what happened was something interesting. People cared about what we were talking about. They engaged in the process with only 17% turnout citywide. People in this chambers, people who are hearing my voice, we got work to do. No matter what party you're from, no matter red state, blue state, purple state, we're in a state of crisis because if only 17 people out of 100 can decide elections in this country, we had to up our game. We got to really be relevant. I talked to people going door-to-door, and some people, you know, the super voters, they do it because Martin Meeger, Malcolm, was out there during Black History Month. And that's fine, whatever is your reason. But some people don't care about Black History Month because they're getting evicted next month. So we have to be relevant when we knock on those doors. And I listened to what we talked about working on tonight, the budget in the field. We have to do a better job of translating that, of what we do on a given Thursday, to people when they open their doors, that it is relevant to their lives. If we can do that, we can move it from 17% to something more respectable. Now, wherever you are on November, as they said in one of those shows, winter is coming. And we better, we better really engage those voters on the issues that they care about. So congratulations to everyone who won. You know, God don't make mistakes. For those who lost, there's something in your future, but we have to get on our job to translate the good work that you do in these chambers to the doors in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Member Jones. I echo those sentiments. Transforming policy to impact, because other than that, it's going to be an uphill battle. There are no more speeches on behalf of majorities, but at this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. I move that council stays adjourned until Thursday, May 2, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. promptly.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that council stays adjourned until Thursday, May 2, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries.